Welcome to our Board of Education regular meeting. Reconvening the meeting at this time. Mrs. Anaya, please read our public statement.
On Friday, January 4th, 2019, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Ag Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Ag Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Byrd.
Price.
Mr. Castellano.
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd. Mr. Price.
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Here.
Mrs. Summer.
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi.
Here.
Mr. Ellis. And Mr. Delabarka.
Here. Everyone, please rise for our flag salute. Ready, salute.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, and welcome, everyone, to our meeting this evening. At this time, I have a motion to approve minutes of the regular and executive sessions of November 19th and November 26th. Mrs. Solagi, may I have a second? Mrs. Sullivan, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Byrd.
Yes.
Mr. Castellano.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mrs. Summer.
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi.
Yes.
Mr. Ellis. And Mr. Delabarka.
Yes. At this time, Mrs. Anaya, would you introduce Mr. Garcia for our audit presentation, please?
Yes, and in attendance tonight, we have Mr. Michael Garcia with Ford Scott are presenting our 2018-2019 audit report.
Thank you. As part of the annual presentation of the audit, I'd like to remind the Board of Education that the school audit really has two components. Of course, we're looking at and confirming the numbers, but we're also looking to determine that your business office is following the rules and regulations that the state of New Jersey, as well as the federal government, impose on all school districts. When we find areas of problem or exception, we're required to write a finding and recommendation for corrective action. The good news is that it is a clean audit this year. There are no recommendations that will require corrective action by the Board. You know, that's not always an easy thing for your BA to be able to do, but Mrs. Anaya and her staff have done a very good job to be able to present the records in such good shape. Additionally, we do look at and confirm the numbers. And I've gone through the report in detail with Dr. Gucio, as well as your business administrator, and last week, and in full detail of this report. But for tonight, in summary form, there's a specific item that I want to draw your attention to. In the actual audit, it would be on page 75. The Board members have a handout, which will be page hand-numbered 17 on the handout, but in the actual audit, it's page 75. And this is the fund balance, the ending fund balance for the district. And the district ended the year with $14,929,379 in fund balance. That's the total surplus funds on hand. But of that amount, the majority of it has already been spoken for or reserved for other specific purposes, and I'll go through those purposes with you. First, of the $14,909, $5,215,673 is being used to fund this year's school budget, this year being the 19-20 school year. We also have excess surplus on hand. Just as a recap and a reminder, the state of New Jersey imposes a 2% cap on the surplus of school districts. When you have funds in excess of that amount, it's required to be set aside and used for tax relief and fund the subsequent year's budget. So in this case, the excess surplus funds are $3 million. That's set aside and now must be used to fund your next budget, which will be the 20-21 school year. We'll use that $3 million. We also have a capital reserve account in the amount of $1,801,449. That money is set aside and can only be used for capital improvements to your buildings. You have a reserve for maintenance, $392,000, similar to the capital reserve, can only be used for the repair and maintenance of your buildings. We also have a reserve for encumbrances in the amount of $1,187,656. Those funds are set aside to pay bills that were open at June 30th for the school year. It's normal operating procedure that the vendors don't all get their paperwork in in time to get paid, so that money is set aside until the paperwork is in and subsequently approved and paid by the Board. Finally, that leaves us with our unassigned fund balance. In this case, that is $3,332,601. That's your total 2% number. So of the $14,929, only the $3,332,601 is your unassigned free available balance, but that is the full 2%. And like I did say at the beginning of the discussion, the state does impose that 2% cap. That's the maximum that you're allowed to retain from one year to the next. And once again, you'll see that those items all total the $14,929,379. This particular exhibit in the audit is the one that I feel is the most important for the Board members and the public to be aware of when we have a limited amount of time for discussion. So I did want to make sure we discuss that. If there are any other comments or questions or other areas you would like me to cover, I am available to answer those questions or comments that you may have.
Any Board members have any questions at this time? Just so the public knows, we met with Mr. Garcia in executive session. That's why we were a little over time. So he did have to give us the answer to all of the questions that we had in exec.
A little more detail.
Thank you very much for doing that, Mr. Garcia. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And thank you for being here this evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you to Mrs. Anaya and your entire staff for the great job that you continue to do. That's certainly appreciated by all of us. Thank you.
I'll pass the mic to John. Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
At this time, we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Gucio.
Welcome to our December Board of Education meeting, and I just want to highlight that this is the last Board of Education meeting for the decade. All right? So think about that, the last one for this entire decade. Okay, my superintendent's report each month consists of a PowerPoint presentation as well as a video, and since it's the last meeting of the decade, I'm going to switch things around a little bit, and we're going to start with the video tonight. Do you agree? (Music) So that gives you a little highlight of what has happened over the last month here in the district, and I always wish I could capture everything, but we do the best that we can. Very, very busy school district, lots of great things, and very, very proud of what goes on here. And with that, we've covered the district learning goals, and we begin with student achievement. Our MSA Academy got to see some careers and learn about career education related to the areas that they're studying. The DBQ project took place in our social studies department. As you saw in the video, the hour code across the district, as we do each and every year. Our students involved in technology and computer science. One book, one school at Eagle Academy. Stream nights occurred, particularly at Fernwood Avenue Middle School. Once Upon a Mattress was a fine and performing arts presentation at Fernwood this December. Teen Arts Festival, our high school students, middle school students participated. And our YB County Census Video Winners, the winners from our participants, participants from our Communications Academy and our AP Government Class at the high school. We received first, second place, as well as honorable mention. Climate and Culture, winter concerts going on throughout the district. Yip Pajama Day was celebrated. Renaissance War Decorated Concerts, as you saw at the high school. Spirit Week in our schools. ELL Parent Night happened at SWIFT. Cultural traditions were shared in our schools by our students and teachers. The Spanish class at our Fernwood Middle School had a presentation, and our French class had Penn Pal, Penn Pal Project going on throughout the district. Krampus appeared at the high school, and the German class, and Mr. Gunther is not here tonight, and so I revealed to Krampus, but each and every year, Mac Gunther, a German teacher, brings this culture, German culture, and shares that with the students. Community partnerships, our Village Grand, folks donated gift cards, $91 gift cards to Fernwood Avenue students, so we will honor the Village Grand folks in upcoming meetings, but we are grateful for that. District Learning occurred with Penn, University of Penn. Community partnerships presented Frozen 2 as a fundraiser for the school district. Career Connections Committee had their annual career fair, and that was hosted by the high school. Project Love, there were cards written to the troops at Davenport. Our teen center is available at our high school for students for social emotional needs. Our ALAB visited the Tropicana to learn about the casino business. Pet Shelter Drive was held, and Land Cave Community College came to EHT to share their courses and their programs with our students, as well as the Naval Academy, and our FBLA held their craft show at the high school. So these are the community partners and connections that we have going on with school and community. Speaking of the community, this fall, we held six meetings at night, three for full-day kindergarten, and three for reconfiguration of the district. All related to the strategic plan. Strategic plan can be found under the superintendent's corner on our website, but our strategic plan, approved by the Board of Education, feedback from our stakeholders, stated some areas under our three district learning goals where we, as administration and as stakeholders, had conversations and did some research. So bottom line, the common themes that came out of the reconfigurations meetings were these five areas. One, leave our high school the way it is in 1912. Many lower elementary reconfigurations were offered and studied by us. Three, look at the configuration of four, five, six grouping. That's grades four, five, and six, possibly two schools for that. Look at one middle school with grades seven and eight being housed there, and I noticed there was no mention of Eagle Academy, which has been a discussion with the Board of Education regarding the status on that. Also presented to the public that when we look at these areas, these themes, that there are variables to consider, all right? And these are the variables that we are going to study. Have not officially presented a proposal to the Board, but I wanted to share with the public and the Board today that this is an overview, okay, of a proposal or plans that the public presented to us and that we packaged, if you will. So the summary, and again, this presentation can be found under the superintendent's report on our website, but basically, leave the high school alone. Lower elementary configuration was done, because when we take our proposal for full-day kindergarten, full-day preschool, that lower elementary reconfiguration occurred, and that was presented in our full-day kindergarten plan. We will continue to study elementaries for grades four, five, and six, and one middle school, looking at all those variables that go along with this in our study. Sixth grade, constantly putting sixth grade on that seventh and eighth grade schedule, from the seventh grade on the sixth grade schedule, so that's something we'll be looking at, and we'll be spending time exploring options for Eagle Academy, all right? So that's, in a nutshell, that was the summary of those meetings. And more to come for the Board in terms of the closeout of those meetings. That was a summary, and the presentation is again on the website. At this time, we're going to move on to some presentations and recognition. Excuse me. And we're going to begin, I'm going to call up Mr. Tom Beck, our Director of Food Services, and explain a little bit about Give the Kids Lunch and introduce our guests.
Happy holidays to everyone, Merry Christmas. My name is Tom Beck. I'm the Food Service Director for your school district. I'd like to tell you a little bit about a heartwarming story. If I could, I'll make it brief. You know, even though it's the holidays, it's right around the corner, there's a lot of children that really struggle with paying their lunch and breakfast debts, and out of the blue, I would say about a month ago, there was an angel that called us, and that angel's name is Mr. Losco, Carlo Losco, from Moscow Real Estate. Out of the blue, said, "I'd like to get together with you and make a nice donation if we could." We have a program set up. I don't want to steal your thunder.
(Laughter).
Yeah. But Carlo, if I can, okay, is starting an organization for Atlantic County where they're going to be driving the community and the businesses in Atlantic County to raise funds for local school districts. And this evening, Mr. Losco, I feel more comfortable saying that, Mr. Losco's wife would like to, and Mr. Losco would like to make a donation this evening in honor of their son that was tragically killed in a car accident in 2017. So, and I'd like to say a few words.
Thanks for having me tonight. I know the holidays are busy for everybody, and I know you have a busy schedule. This is my, this will be the first donation, first district that I'm going to be donating money to to kick off this campaign. The goal is in Atlantic County to get each school district to hopefully communicate with myself initially as I round up business people in each town. Once we do that, we'll be getting donations, money, whatever they can, you know, decide to do, and once we have a pot of money, have it be a resource for the districts, for people like yourself, Mr. Beck, who's been very instrumental, really helped out, and give it to the most needy of children who have difficulties paying for their school lunch. I mean, that's basically a fundamental thing that should happen in school, and so I thought that would be a nice thing to attack in the community. So as we go around the community, it'll grow. Right now, it's me, that's it, but the people start calling, you'll see some ads.
We'll partner up.
We'll partner up.
Our name will be up there.
That's fine. And so we'll make a nice donation, initial donation, make sure we sign the check. And $2,000 to the district. I know we have a lot of work to do, but we'll get there quick, I can assure you.
I appreciate your efforts and for taking to loss, you know, meeting the needs of our students. And with that, I'd like to present you with the Superintendent's Award, the Give the Kids Lunch Program, and for recognizing your generosity to our students, big help.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. (Applause). Okay, moving on with recognition, as you saw in our video, we received the 2019 GIFT School Safety Award, and for the second year in a row, and along with a great audit, we are also doing well in our safety, school safety area, and that has a lot to do where, you know, things happen, there are accidents here and there, why we don't want those things to happen, but it's life, you know, there's trips and falls and bumps and bruises, but the importance is reporting those incidents as soon as possible. And that's what our insurance company looks at, the importance of being able to get that information. So that's funneled through myself, through Chandra, through Chandra's office, and we've been recognized for being on top and on top of our game. That's Sue Diefenbeck and Amy Frye and Chandra Nye. So to the employees that are sitting in the audience, good job. I know sometimes they're like, "Oh," you know, they're honest, but this is why, and we've been recognized for the efforts that we've made. So, great job. Thank you. (Applause). Okay, we move on to another recognition that we have tonight, our College Board's Advanced Placement Award. I'd like to call up Mrs. Sam Elko, Director of Guidance, virtual Patty Connor, and our recipient, Casey Wexler, who's a high school guidance counselor. (Applause). So on November 21st, I received this letter, that, yeah, frame, that tells me that the College Board AP is recognizing Casey Wexler for outstanding support of advanced placement program, and Sam can tell you a little bit more, but Casey hosts face-to-face professional development workshops on behalf of College Board, and she's done that over the summer, and I just want to recognize, because I'm very impressed, you represent Ag Harbor Township in this nationwide organization, so I wanted you to come tonight and I wanted to present this framed letter that I got to you. So congratulations, and thank you for your efforts. (Applause). So I could probably stand up here for a really long time and tell you all about the
great things that Casey does for, I mean, not just for our department, but more so really for our students and our staff. She does run our AP program at the high school, and that doesn't mean that she just runs the tests in May, right? Throughout the year, she's supporting teachers, she's making sure that they have what they need to support students, and then we give, what, we offer 28, I think, of the AP exams.
Twenty-eight classes and 29 exams.
Right. So every exam that they offer, except for one, right, human geography is the only one that we don't have.
Well, Italian and Japanese.
Yes. But that equates to over 400 students that take over 1,100 exams at our school, and unless you've ever planned a large-scale test in a school environment, it's insane. Like, the level of detail, the factors that go into it, and she doesn't do it to make her job easier. She does it for the students and the staff to make sure that they have what they need. And she's a pleasure to work with, she's, her energy and enthusiasm make my life a whole lot easier, so I appreciate that. I know the teachers appreciate her very much, and yeah, so we're really happy for her, and she has, she's been traveling the country, training other AP coordinators because she's just that good.
I appreciate my 11-year-old Sam photo. (Laughter). I haven't gotten one taken since then. (Laughter). Yeah. Hashtag EHT try. And speaking of, moving on to a student that has been making us so proud in her running efforts over the last few years in her high school career. I don't know if anybody opened the paper this weekend and saw a picture of Olivia Schaefer, who represents Ag Harbor Township High School as a cross-country runner. You know, and I hope I covered everything here, but I'm going to call her coaches up. And Olivia, come on up, who is our Atlantic City Press Runner of the Year, Cape Atlantic League Fall Athlete of the Year, South Jersey Coaches Runner of the Year, Atlantic County Champion, Cape Atlantic League Champion, South Jersey Group Four Champion, and ran, ended up in sixth place at the Media Champions of Homedale, New Jersey. So that's what I know, and I'm totally impressed, but I know your coaches have the stories behind all that, and I'm going to turn it over to them.
Well, thank you, Dr. Gucio. I'm very impressed by all that, very, thank you, the running coaches in this room. I don't think anybody here knows too much about running as that. And I have to say that the morning after Olivia ran her race as Media Champion, Dr. Gucio emailed me over the weekend, "We have to get her in here." So for you to be cognizant of all that, everything else, and you play, you know, we appreciate that, we really do. I'll be as quick as I can, although I have quite a story to tell, so bear with me. I do have a tendency to get long-winded, so if I do, sorry for my assistant coach up here, just give me a nudge. Olivia's junior campaign was really phenomenal one, and after last fall, expectations for this season were very high. Well, as in life and as in tracks and hurdles arose, Olivia was diagnosed with POTS syndrome, which is a blood circulation disorder, which makes you very tired, makes it difficult to exercise, and she wasn't able to run the winter and spring season, which was devastating for her, but also, she was also forced to miss a lot of time at school, so she had to do home instruction, and it would have been very easy for her to give up hope and motivation in her running accolade and even in her academics, but she had, it had the opposite effect on her. She had to spend countless hours at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia doing rigorous therapy, and she's actually become the model for how to treat this syndrome in the local area. So when the summer, she got through her classes, she passed everything, when the summer started, we started our summer training, I didn't know what to expect. She wasn't able to run more than a mile for five or six months, so luckily Coach McLaughlin was able to get this idea in her head of just trust the process. Olivia, don't worry about the end of the season, take it practice by practice, and he kept saying, "Trust the process," to the point of annoyance. He's a Knicks fan, I'm a New York Knicks fan from New York, but we won't get into that. But Olivia took it to heart, she really did. She didn't look ahead, she took it one practice at a time, and you could tell that there was a genuine gratefulness and pleasure just to be at practice after what she'd been through. After countless mornings at the nature reserve, evenings at Kennedy Park to run the Ninth Street Bridge, she had a great summer. We came out ready to race, the first race of the year, she won the first race, just edging out her T-Rac, Mickey Kumato, who's here tonight, who's also a press Atlantic City First Team All-Star, and I'm glad Mickey's here because she was with Olivia every step of the way. Olivia won the second race, the third race, and won every Cal competition in the fall, which no EHT runner ever did. She went on to win the county meet by 40 seconds, the Cal meet by 40 seconds, and that's when the real fun began. At the Group Four South Jersey meet, a race that nobody picked her to win, the pundits online, you know, running community is very nerdy, and they do all this stuff online, but nobody picked her to win. She won the race, and not only she won the race, she had the fastest time in South Jersey, and one of the top 20 fastest times in South Jersey history. So it was a historical race, and very rarely, anybody who's coached in here, very rarely does an athlete or a team just totally do something that was completely unexpected. I was looking at my stopwatch, like, wow, what the heck just happened here? And the next two meets were at Homedale Park, which is up in North Jersey. To give you a little idea of what the course is like, a very difficult course, there's two hills on that course that are twice the incline of the Ninth Street Bridge. Think about that, two separate hills, twice that incline. So we went there a few times running the team. Olivia went one time by herself to run the course. As Dr. Gucio said, she came in fourth place at the group meet, and then on the biggest of stages, at the Media Champions, she came in sixth place, and it wasn't just her talent that got her there, it was her determination, but it was also her race savviness, and she ran with the confidence in those last few races that I've never seen before. I coached boys and girls, I've had national champions here, and I've never seen that. And Olivia only focuses on the things that she can control, and as a coach, that's so refreshing, because high school students are always focused on things out of their control. And a quick story, on our way to the county meet at Stockton with the team, it was a very windy day, howling wind, they told us, "Don't bring tents," it was, you know, like Auntie Em in The Wizard of Oz type, you know, windy day. So we're riding there, and Coach and I are sitting in the front, the kids in the back, we should win, the win, the win, keep here. So I got frustrated, I stood up on the bus. I said, "Olivia." "Yeah?" I didn't even know what she was saying. "So you worried about the win today?" She said, "No." "Any other questions, kids?" "No, only worried about the things that you can control." And I'll finish by saying this, coaching Olivia has been really the perfect marriage of trust, of hard work, of determination. Her parents are here tonight. Her father was an incredible runner in his time and still is, and never once did they question anything, a workout, a race strategy, and this kind of success can't happen with that. So, Mr. and Mrs. Schaefer, I thank you for everybody here tonight for trusting me with your daughter as a father of two young girls, that means even more to me now than, you know, it may have a few years ago. Her accomplishments will live on long past her graduation, her effect on her teammates will live on for years, and maybe the greatest impact she had was on her coach, because Olivia, you've made me a better coach. You started well since seventh grade, I've seen you mature into a strong young woman, and I think you may have seen me mature more than I've actually seen you mature. Thanks again, everybody, for having us here tonight.
(Applause). Athletic Award, where you're being recognized for demonstrating outstanding athletic ability and talent in cross-country. So congratulations, and very impressive. Thank you, Dr. Gucio. Thank you for your dedication to the sport and to our school, and representing Ag Harbor Township with pride, and your legacy. I mean, you've broke records and... So luckily Coach McLaughlin was able to get this idea in her head of just trust the process. Olivia, don't worry about the end of the season, take it practice by practice. And he kept saying, trust the process to the point of annoyance. He's a New York Knicks fan, I'm a New York Knicks fan from New York, but we won't get into that. But Olivia took it to heart, she really did. She didn't look ahead, she took it one practice at a time. And you could tell that there was a genuine gratefulness and pleasure just to be at practice after what she'd been through. After countless mornings at the nature reserve, evenings at Kennedy Park to run the Ninth Street Bridge. She had a great summer. We came out ready to race, first race of the year. She won the first race, just edging out her T-list, Mickey Kumato, who's here tonight, who's also press Atlantic City First Team All-Star. And I'm glad Mickey's here because she was with Olivia every step of the way. Olivia won the second race, the third race, and won every Cal competition in the fall, which no EHT runner ever did. She went on to win the county meet by 40 seconds, the Cal meet by 40 seconds. And that's when the real fun began. At the Group Four South Jersey Meet, a race that nobody picked her to win, the pundits online, you know, running community is very nerdy and they do all this stuff online, but nobody picked her to win. She won the race and not only she won the race, she had the fastest time in South Jersey and one of the top 20 fastest times in South Jersey history. So it was a historical race. And very rarely, anybody who's coaching here, very rarely does an athlete or a team just totally do something that was completely unexpected. I was looking at my stopwatch, like, wow, what the heck just happened here? And the next two meets were at Homedale Park, which is up in North Jersey. To give you a little idea of what the course is like, very difficult course. There's two hills on that course that are twice the incline of the Ninth Street Bridge. Think about that. Two separate hills, twice that incline. So we went there a few times running the team. Olivia went one time by herself to run the course. As Dr. Grucci said, she came in fourth place at the group meet. And then on the biggest of stages, at the Media Champions, she came in sixth place. And it wasn't just her talent that got her there, it was her determination, but it was also her race savviness. And she ran with the confidence in those last few races that I've never seen before. I coached boys and girls, we've had national champions here, and I've never seen that. And Olivia only focuses on the things that she can control. And as a coach, that's so refreshing, because high school students always focus on things out of their control. And a quick story, on our way to the county meet at Stockton with the team, it was a very windy day, howling wind. They told us, don't bring tents. It was, you know, like Auntie Em in The Wizard of Oz type, you know, windy day. So we're riding there and Coach and I are sitting in the front, the kids in the back, which is when the wind, the wind, the wind, keep here. So I got frustrated, I stood up on the bus. I said, Olivia? Yeah? I didn't even know what she said. Said, are you worried about the win today? She said, no. Any other questions, kids? No, only worried about the things that you can control. And I'll finish by saying this, coaching Olivia has been really the perfect marriage of trust, of hard work, of determination. Her parents are here tonight. Her father was an incredible runner in his time and still is. And never once did they question anything, a workout, a race strategy. And this kind of success can't happen without. So Mr. and Mrs. Schaefer, I thank you for everybody here tonight for trusting me with your daughter as a father of two young girls. That means even more to me now than it, you know, may have a few years ago. Her accomplishments will live on long past her graduation. Her effect on her teammates will live on for years. And maybe the greatest impact she had was on her coach, because Olivia, you made me a better coach. You started well since 7th grade. I've seen you mature into a strong young woman. And I think you may have seen me mature more than I've actually seen you mature. Thanks again, everybody, for having us here tonight.
[applause] Your athletic award where you're being recognized for demonstrating outstanding athletic ability and talent in cross-country. So congratulations and very impressive. Thank you, Grucci. Thank you for your dedication to the sport and to our school and representing Egg Harbor Township with pride. And your legacy, I mean, you've broke records and people are going to be chasing you for years. You're a long-running girl. And before we, you know, let this guy sit down, do you feel the passion? Do you feel the passion, the relationship building that occurs between our staff and their students and their student athletes? I mean, these guys are out there in the wind, in the cold, watching kids run in bridges. Do you run? Okay, they run as well, for now. But that's, that's what it's about. The time and effort and beyond what's required that they put into the sports that they love, the classes that they love, the subjects that they love. And it's, it's all for the love of our students. So I want to thank you all, both coaches and Olivia, yeah, your dedication. Best wishes to you and your future endeavors, which includes spring track, winter spring track.
Yep.
All right, all right. Well, thank you and happy holidays.
Thanks, Josh.
[applause] Our next presentation, Karen Seven.
Dr. Grucci?
I'm sorry?
I would just like to give the parents a hand, because I too have an athlete who tours ACL and MCL two years in a row and fought his way back. And people don't understand the strain, the pressure to see their kid healthy and get back out there. So for the parents, I wanted to give you a hand too.
Thank you. Moving on to Karen. Karen Seven, Supervisor of Health and Physical Education. And she has a presentation.
And I have to say, back in Miller's school, Olivia Schaefer was the winner of our Miller Mile. Remember that day? Right here. So welcome, everyone. My name is Karen Seven. I'm Health and Phys Ed at the Nursing Supervisor of the Egg Harbor Township School District. If you ever want to see a fun place, go to the elementary gyms of the EHT schools. In the elementary gyms, the phys ed teachers teach fundamental skills, the hopping, the galloping, the skipping. The teachers do a wide variety of activities, from station activities to relay races. It's just a fun, fun place to be in the gym. Secondary level physical education, we go on to more game sports. We have a variety of things that we do, floor hockey, tennis, pickleball. We go archery, swimming, yoga, you name it. We do units in about a three-week cycle to give everyone a variety of the skill that's taught. At high school right now, we're in driver education. We have approximately 558 students sitting for the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Exam of January 31st. And those are some stats of the kids that pass and that will be on the road or share the road with you right now, so watch out. And we do have a lot of goals in health and physical education. We want our students to be physically literate. We want them to know the skill necessary to participate in a variety of physical activities. We want them to participate regularly in physical activity. So if you haven't exercised yet today, you have tonight to do it. We want them to be physically fit and we want them to value physical activity. I instill in all Health and Phys Ed teachers, I want them to love to exercise. I want them to be role models. I want them to, to have that passion to the students that it's really, really important to be healthy. Because when our back hurts or we're out of shape or mentally or socially, we're just not feeling right, it ruins our day. So we really try to have the students love physical education. One of our students at the high school did a quick video on high school. So if you just want to take a minute and watch this.
[upbeat music] Good gym activity I like is archery, because that's a pretty cool thing that I don't get to do often.
I like strength and conditioning because we have the freedom to work out the way we want.
I like to play soccer because I get to have friendly competition with my friends and other players.
I love playing tennis because we get to enjoy the outside.
I like playing floor hockey because we get to express friendly competition.
I like playing volleyball because I don't get to play often.
So one thing we weren't able to showcase because of... We have about 35 mountain bikes and during the freshman phys ed unit, we teach bicycling. So the kids get active and that's a skill that people can do throughout life. But we weren't able to include that on the video.
Okay? All right? Thank you, Karen. Again, for the board's budgeting purposes, we forward the budget, we are highlighting our content areas. All right, now your presentation from EHT TV and the EHT TV manager, Leanna Mullin.
Can I collect this for you? Sure. Hi, everybody. I made a pre-presentation because I knew I'd make my sweet nuts. So yes, as many of you already know, I'm the manager of additional community. My name is Leanna Mullin. I've been with the district since 2014. I want to thank Mike and Kevin for being here tonight in support of what we do at the TV station. So just... All right. So for those that don't know me too well, I do come from a former background working in television. One of my first jobs out of college was working for Channel 40. And I received my associate from Cumberland County College, now Rowan College of South Jersey, in television production. I went for, to Stockton for both my bachelor's and my master's degree. And as some of you already know, I'm currently working on my doctorate. I'll be coming to you shortly for some dissertation help. So hopefully you'll prove that when that time comes. And then as far as Tyler Gardner, who recently completed his master's degree from Southern University of Kansas University in screenwriting, he comes to us with a background in reading scripts. So in addition, he went to Atlantic Cape Community College for Communications and studied at Rowan University for an RTF degree, as we call it, radio-tv film. He joined us in October of 2017. I should mention too, that my, in addition to our daily work with the TV station, I'm on the Professional Development Committee and I'm on the school leadership team. And Tyler is headlining our esports club at the high school. So if I tried to make a list of everything that we do, we would probably be here all night. But I tried to break it down into a couple of main things. Most of you already know that some of our priority programs are the high school graduation to film that. And we also film a lot of the elementary and middle school concerts in the community that's generally where they see us the most. But we also do a variety of other things. We create news packages and film many projects. These are some more of the high-quality, a lot of concentrated editing that you might see. You might have saw our Wall of Honor. We documented at the high school that we unveiled the Wall of Honor recently. His Men with Blantez program, when that became a model program, that was also, we got to highlight that with the teachers that are involved in that program. We also participated in the New Jersey Department of Education's School Spirit video, which we had a very quick turnaround for that. But, you know, I thought it really captured EHT pride as best as we can. Some bigger projects that happened more recently over the last couple of years have been opening day productions. So Dr. Grucci has always been about, you know, climate culture in our school district. So we try to, you know, encapsulate that essentially on the first day through staff. So we had hashtag What's in the EHT Egg, which was our Jurassic Park film. And then more recently, we had EHT Me Upside Down for the Stranger Things fans. And, you know, she always surprises us with whatever, whatever our tweets and media are. In addition to the video production side, we also do the web and social media for the, for the district. Together with the members of the IT department, we do manage the district website. So that'll be everything from the images and the rotating banner to updating Dr. Grucci's Super Tense Corner and any other content as it needs to be more prominent on our website. Since we took over the social media, with Facebook alone, I think we've grown about 1,200 followers in the last year. So our Facebook population is growing. And only in the last 18 months or so that we've had Instagram, we've gotten up to 1,500 followers. So again, that'll continue to grow. And based on the age that we know our parents to be, our upcoming kindergarten families as an example, we envision that more of those millennial parents are going to be on Instagram. So we envision that we'll continue to see more traffic there as well. We also have a presence on Twitter and LinkedIn. And you can find us in a variety of different video formats. So of course we are on YouTube, as you might expect. BoxCast is what we use to stream live events. So if you happen to catch our graduation live, that was using the service for BoxCast. And we are actually in real-time broadcasting graduation live. We also host Channel 97. So for our Comcast, as you're all familiar with, Comcast Xfinity Channel 97. If you go down to those lower channels, we are broadcasting in high-definition. And in order to broadcast in a television industry standard, we use Hypercaster, InfoView, and Cloud Connect as some of the devices that are needed. You're also probably familiar with the COM Academy. So one thing that's really unique about our Communications Academy at the high school is that we partner both with the classroom teachers and then EHT TV is sort of the industry equivalent. So we push in for different workshops for Class 1, 2, and 3. And that'll be different things like hands-on filming events. I'll do an introduction to Photoshop where Tyler will host a screenwriting workshop on character development or writing in format. And we also assist with the 10-day film challenge if the students participate in each year. Thanks also to the Board of Education for supporting me to get the bus license, as you might have seen the hashtag COM man. We were able to go to the nature reserve, we get some more real-life experience shooting for B-roll. We got to shoot at Batfield Village for the screenwriting class and be able to shoot a short horror film there. And then also holiday concerts in the last week or two, that's where we've been the most. In addition, this year is our first year with our internships. So we have some that are internal, which we include in the high school guidance department. We've had some students work with them. Yearbook and Sports Media. We also have external internships as well. So the police department, we have a couple of students that work with the police department. We have a student working on a documentary with Historical Society. And we also showcase... Just to give you a visual representation, I mean, I scrolled through my pictures in my phone to try to get the most visual of what this looks like. And you'll notice that for, it was actually difficult to find pictures of Tyler and I at any of these, because we're always taking pictures of the kids doing awesome things. But COM Camp is a big thing that we do. It's a free week for students that we're able to go out in the field and get more video, photography, editing. We got to go to the IMAX theater and learn about the behind-the-scenes of what it's like to run a movie theater. And we've also had students just recently win the census video, so they were honored at Stockton. I was able to see them get that award. Produced the mayor's forum, we filmed the township committee meetings. We got a couple of students in the back in Austin who are learning how to film board meetings now, as that's a new initiative. And, you know, to have it all tried to fit in one screen is nearly impossible. But I would say that one thing that our students do really well is make great videos. So the video that I'm about to show is actually produced by one of our senior interns who did a little bit of behind-the-scenes of EHT TV.
My name is Leanna Mullin and I am the manager of district communications and I work in EHT TV.
My name is Tyler Gardner and I work for EHT TV.
So over the last few years, my, my job at EHT TV has really evolved. So what started out with covering concerts at night and helping out with the media classes has really evolved into being a, a working partner with the Communications Academy.
But typically, the day will start off with music in the morning, where I play music throughout the school as all the students are coming in off the buses. So after music in the morning, I'll hit play on Eagle News, our student news broadcast, which plays during homeroom. And then after that, the day is pretty much, you know, different throughout the week. So there'll be some days where I'm going out in the field and filming events throughout the district. Other days, I will come in later and film sports, which that's probably my favorite part of the job, because I get to take students with me. They do play-by-play and color commentary on the games while I film. So that's a lot of fun. I think it's a pretty cool opportunity for the students through the esports media class.
But also serving for district needs, whether it be for social media, creating video content, photography, graphic design. Really, we are a catch-all of everything, public relations, marketing, and being our local news outlet for not only internal needs, but also for the greater Egg Harbor Township as a whole.
So when I go out and film and record things, I will come back and edit those things into programming for Channel 97.
So in order to do that, we have to use programs that we use called Tellview. Tellview includes InfoView, Hypercaster, Cloud Connect, they're all partner devices. And then we have our Elemental Stream, which allows us to not only go out to Channel 97, but we can also broadcast it online, that even if you don't live in the township, we could really reach anyone with an internet connection. Also have some more creative projects now too. Chances are, you saw our Jurassic Park video two years ago, or you might have seen our Stranger Things video that came out earlier this school year.
I created this elaborate Ouija board thing, so you can tell us where you are. But hurry up before Q-SAT comes.
We also produce things like the Learning Lab video, that was The Muppets. Most recently, you probably saw our Mr. Rogers campaign.
Time to register is here. You'll be going to kindergarten next year soon. Sign up online. Just sign up online.
And that not only extended from just being a video, but that also required making custom banners for our website, making custom graphics for our social media, the email that went out, in addition to our graphics for Channel 97 and videos related to that. So what seemed like just maybe one little video and some playing that went into it really has, has been a much larger public relations project. And I, I'm really proud of the type of work that we do now.
We do support work in the classrooms with the teachers, where we teach workshops in a, in a bunch of different subjects. So you'll typically find me in screenwriting, things like, you know, screenplay format, story structure.
Now that I have my bus license and can take students out to go film, we've done things like taking them out for the holiday concerts. We also produce content in the TV studio for Pursuing Public Health and also go out in the field to get the B-roll related to showing the locations that we're talking about in studio. What I think is most important about what EHT TV is able to do and what we're able to do with our students is that we're, we're getting the message out there, we're telling our story. And I think that that's really empowering for us as a school district. But it also shows our students that there's a lot of value in building those community connections, putting those back-pocket video skills and, and social media. I really think that our students are able to walk away with a lot more because we have this partnership with EHT TV and the Communications Academy. And ultimately, it ends up being a win-win for our district, because we are able to get more content out there at a better quality and people get to know what it, what the great things we do here in EHT really are.
I'd like to give a shout-out to Timmy Dean at the screen, who produced that video for us. I think he really did a great job there. So finally, as you already know, we do do, we, we are one of the main components of our district's social media, but I hope you'll follow us on our station social media to see more about what we're doing. So you'll find us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, the hashtag EHT COM Academy. We do have our own webpage within the website, and that's also where you'll find the board meeting videos if you were looking. So as they become available online, that is a quick place to find them. And also you can subscribe to our YouTube channel for any of the content we make between Super Tense Report, the board meetings, or any of the other short videos that we create are all available on the YouTube channel. So without, if you have any more of your time, thank you very much for inviting us. Happy holidays and have a good night.
Yeah, wow. Right? So there's a method behind my madness. How do you get someone that's such an asset to the school district, who's so busy, who's behind the camera all the time, who is doing her doctoral studies while teaching courses at a college to a board meeting to recognize her? And how do you remember what to say, all the things she does? So you have her come and present, and she tells you all about herself. Now I'd like to have Mrs. Leanna Mullin, manager of district communications, so please come up to the board. I've tried to get her to a board meeting since September, all right? Amazing, amazing asset, young lady that we have in our, in our school district. And we say she has Mullin magic, because she never says no, okay? And I know...
super tense report, the board meetings, or any of the other short videos that we create are all available on the YouTube channel. So without getting any more of your time, thank you very much for inviting us. Happy holidays and have a good day.
Yeah, wow, right? So there's a method behind my madness. How do you get someone that's such an asset to the school district, who's so busy, who's behind the camera all the time, who is doing her doctoral studies while teaching courses at a college to a board meeting to recognize her? And how do you remember what to say, all the things she does? So you have her come and present, and she tells you all about herself. Now I'd like to have Ms. Leanna Mullin, manager of district communications, so please come up to the board. I've tried to get her to a board meeting since September, all right? Amazing, amazing asset young lady that we have here in our school district. And we say she has Mullin magic because she never says no, okay? And I know sometimes she just cringes and says, how am I going to make an egg crack open? But she will make it happen. She won't tell you the agony that she goes through and how difficult it is. She'll just work and work and work and put efforts into it and make it happen. And she makes us look so good all the time. And I hope you get the full picture, or at least some of the picture, of what she does not only with the videos, but with our website and with the banners that we put up. They're so colorful and so descriptive. And, you know, sometimes it's in the middle of the night, school's closed, you know? You call and the banners create. So it's all the time. And I'd like to bring up Kevin Erdabey and Mike Sweater as well. These guys supervise the department. And I know you have a few things that you could add and share with the public and with the board. But, you know, everyone's like, oh, that video was cool. Oh, that's a great job. Right here, this is what makes it happen. So Mike and Kevin, I know you have a few words that you could share and just let the public and the board know. Well, like I said, she's always behind the camera in the studio, but the work that's produced.
Yeah, I think Leanna is always pretty selfless. I mean, anytime you call her, she's there to answer the phone. Like you said, middle of the night when we do school closing or there's really nothing she says no to, it kind of drives me nuts. Sometimes I can always say no to you. Yeah, what are you doing today? Are you serious? She loves, she has dedication to all the staff here, all the students. I mean, you could see everything she's involved with, beyond being a TV station manager, she's involved with students' lives like day to day. The students love her. I know the academies, and Mike sees her every day, and you could probably attest to that as well, too.
I mean, the biggest thing about Leanna is the work ethic is incredible. The life ethic is incredible. And, you know, she's constantly doing something. She's never sitting still. I know Casey's friends with her, and many of you in the room are friends with her. But she's not at work. She's out with her friends from work, or she's helping people with projects from friends from work, or she's doing something for her academic career. She's a volunteer. She's on the signus board for the township. And thankfully, good for everybody here in Egg Harbor Township, she's moving to the township this week. So she's moving even closer, so she'll probably say yes even more. So for everybody, I think, you know, Leanna is a great testament to a great town. She wants to be here. She wants to live here. She just had a house built here. And good for everybody. And, you know, she's a great product of the community and also the regional schools. So we're just very, very lucky to have her. Thank you.
What does school spirit look like in EHT? Well, it looks a little something like this. And it sounds something like this.
It cuts something like this.
Eight schools, 7,500 students, 1,300 employees.
Thank you, Tyler.
What does school spirit look like in EHT? Well, it looks a little something like...
And Leanna, thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Now, please rest a break. You gotta move.
Well, thank you.
With that, Board of Education members, superintendent's report, the last one of the decade.
Thank you, Dr. Gucchio. Thank you to all of you who made presentations this evening. It's certainly amazing how much goes on in our town that maybe some of us don't even realize all the time, but there's always something going on, and we have great people working here. And we're so proud of that. Moving on with our agenda at this time, we have a student representative's report. Nick, are you by yourself this evening?
I am.
Okay. Mr. Seppi, it's all yours. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. How is everyone? All righty. So we have a shorter report this evening, but I'll make sure you get your substance out of it. So here we go. The Pride Program held presentations on December 3rd and 4th in which caring mates from the NJ Corrections Facility shared their stories and the consequences of bad decisions and how you should make right choices. Lieutenant Joyce Kim and David Dunlevy from the United States Naval Academy held an informative meeting with students on Friday, December 6th. Mrs. Portnoy and our thespian trope represented the district at the NJ State Festival on December 7th, and that was a very successful affair. Last week, seniors with the Academy of War and Business, they visited the Tropicana. We all know that business, and they spoke with many people from the casino industry. Our deck, the halls, is in full swing. The Christmas spirit is very much within our school. We're all very happy to experience that. And then I would like to congratulate Mr. Dale Rec and the Vocal Ensemble and Concert Choirs for a beautiful holiday concert. And great job to Mr. David Millis for collaborating on the piano for the performance. And for the final statement of mine tonight, I would like to congratulate the Guidance Department and several members who have attended this evening. I'd like to thank Guidance Counselors Mrs. Camminali, Mrs. Theofall, and Mrs. Wexler for the Instant Decision Day at Stockton University. The Guidance Department, they really helped some people out. And Stockton interviewed and basically took people right on the spot, and this was a very successful affair, and I'm very happy that it went so well. Furthermore, I appreciate everyone for coming out tonight, members of the public, and I hope you all have a very safe and good holiday and Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever it is you may celebrate, enjoy, all right?
Thank you, Mr. Seppi. Moving on, at this time, we have the public comment for agenda items only. This meeting will now be open for public comments, three minutes per person. If your question pertains to litigation, student personnel items, please see the superintendent after the meeting, as the board does not discuss these matters in public. Depending on the nature and complexity of your questions, the board secretary may ask for your contact information so that someone can get back to you with a response. The microphone is open, and you're all ready for me. Go ahead.
I am. I'm Nicole Theofall. I am 335 Superior Road, Egg Harbor Township. I am a super proud employee of the district. I'm a guidance counselor, as Seppi has told everybody tonight. I'm also a mom in the district with my children here. I'm surprised myself to be speaking on the microphone tonight because I usually don't, I usually kind of sit in the back and observe. But so many great things have happened here tonight that I can't, I can't just sit down and not further recognize the greatness of our schools. As a guidance counselor, I got to witness a beautiful speech for Olivia Schaefer. I got to see my colleague Casey Wexler recognized along with Leanna Mullin. But I want to add to what Seppi said. We had an awesome program at the high school, Stockton Instant Decision Day. And this is a great way for our students to make face-to-face contact with college admissions counselors from the college. And that really helps a lot of kids because when you hear them present, you know, you know on the spot whether or not you want them to join your freshman class. And Seppi was one of the students that participated in that program. He left that part out. He was accepted into the program. He met with a college counselor from Stockton on this past Wednesday. And when he was done interviewing, I went in and I said to the counselor, I'm like, secretly tell me how he did. And she said, he is somebody that we would like to join the Student Board of Trustees for Stockton University. And we were so proud of him. He's so humble, and he's just sitting there. But I do want to recognize Seppi because he wants to move forward in a career of political science, be a politician. He's here. He's learning from all of you. He's learning from the public as well. And it's been recognized by Stockton because they want to see him there and also see him part of their community. So I just wanted to congratulate him publicly.
Yes. Congratulations, Nick Seppi. I'm so proud of you. That's wonderful. Any other members of the public at this time for agenda items only that you would like to comment on? Seeing none, we'll move on to our finance and operations. I would like to have a motion for point eight, to approve finance item 8.1, please. Mrs. Solagi is our second. Mrs. Sullivan, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
And Mr. Delabarka?
Yes. We have a motion, please, to approve finance items 8.2 through 8.18.
So moved.
And who was that? May I ask?
Mr. Price.
Mr. Price, may I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Sullivan, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
And Mr. Delabarka?
Yes. Moving on to our curriculum item on the agenda, may I have a motion, please, to approve curriculum items 9.1 through 9.4?
So made.
Mrs. Solagi? Mr. Castellano, I think, maybe? Yes? Oh, Mrs. Summer. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
And Mr. Delabarka?
Yes. Under Personnel, please, may I have a motion to approve Personnel Items 10.1 through 10.7?
Motion.
Mrs. Byrd, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Castellano, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
And Mr. Delabarka?
Yes. I'm going to ask Dr. Gucchio to please introduce our new employees.
Okay. On behalf of the Board of Education Administration of Egg Harbor Township School District, I'd like to welcome and present to you for the first time as an Egg Harbor Township employee, Danielle Burchard, paraprofessional, Davenport Elementary. Lindsay Day, paraprofessional, Swift School. Veronica Key, Davenport Elementary, paraprofessional. Roseanne Mangold, paraprofessional, Davenport Elementary. Catherine Jones, paraprofessional, Davenport Primary. Deborah Kelly, paraprofessional, Davenport Primary. Not new to the district, but new to the position of Root Analysis for Transportation Department, Arlene Smith. Social Studies teacher, Fernwood Avenue Middle School, Dylan Hammond. And our Behavior Specialist for Davenport Primary, Amy Hogan. If I didn't miss anyone this week, if I did, please stand. All right, good job. Congratulations, everyone, and welcome.
My congratulations to all of you also. Welcome to the great town of Egg Harbor Township. We look forward to your service. And welcome, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd. I know you had a late night time at your school, and we're glad you could be here. Moving on at this time, under Policy, I'd like to have a motion, please, to approve Policy Items 11.1 through 11.5.
So moved.
Mr. Castellano, is there a second, please?
Second.
And Mr. Price?
Yes.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Under New Business, may I have a motion to approve EHC Recreation Department's Bus Usage Request? Mrs. Solagi is her second?
Second.
Mr. Castellano, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
And Mr. Delabarka?
Yes. Under Old Business, we need a motion to approve the HIV Determination Report and a Student Discipline Waiver. Mrs. Hal Gunther, anything on that?
Just a motion there on your old business. So I would ask the board to affirm the HIV determination as discussed in executive session, as well as a student disciplinary waiver as discussed in executive session.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Second.
Mr. Castellano, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
One abstain.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Price. I missed you.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
And Mr. Delabarka?
Yes. At this time, we have the microphone open for public comment. For this time, for any item of interest, same rules apply, three minutes, please. Yes, sir.
Carl Mason, 3057 Fernwood Avenue, Egg Harbor Township, 08234. Little joke there. First thing I want to bring up, I want you to bring that class ranking back, and I want to thank Mr. Ellis. I think he was the only one that voted against taking it away. That's the first thing I want to say. The second thing I want to say, I am proud not to be one of the 1,300 employees here. That's the second thing I want to say. The third thing I want to say, do you have that report for me for all the Egg Harbor Township schools, students that go to other schools, all the county? I got the whole list. Two months ago, the lady over here said, we're working on it. What's it been, three, four months now? Heck, I could probably make the phone calls myself and get on my back, especially that great school. I can't wait till it doubles its size. ACIT, I tell everybody, you got other choices. And some of them said, we're looking and they're going there. And I can't wait till it has that inside track swimming pool. And you're, and I, and guess what? There's a whole lot of students that go in here. You know why? They get a, their graduation is the highest rate in the whole county. And I, you know what else? A long time ago, I fixed Mayor Gunther's telephone line at his house. He was, he said, Carl, how come that other guy couldn't do it? In my opinion, because he was a Democrat, and he was. Look, I was hoping I was going to get the prettiest Christmas sweatshirt award. Yeah. I think this probably makes about 50% of the people angry at me. And say, is there anything else I want to say? If you wonder where I live, it's got that sign, Jill Hillary, there in front of the house. And it's, nobody stole me. Yeah, you know why? 'Cause they think the same way I do. And guess what? With my corrective eyeglasses, 2020, guess who I'm voting for? President again, Donald J. Trump. And yeah, and guess what? I just watched that movie, what Richard Jewels just went there, and you had to see what the media did to him, and the FBI tried to hang him and all that stuff. Great movie. And before I left there, let me tell you what I said to the people there. They gotta stop that witch hunt against my great president. He has done nothing wrong. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas. I don't care what religion you are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public like to address the board at this time for public comment?
Hello, my name is John Serbin. I live in EHT. And first of all, I gotta say, I got two young boys, and I'm so excited that they actually get to go to this district. I've been coming here for the past few months. I just wouldn't seem bored meeting and stuff like that, trying to be a more active member of the community. It excites me, seeing you guys passionate, it excites me seeing coaches passionate, and that way that guy was talking earlier, I could tell he cared. And that's awesome. I love that. The thing I want to talk about tonight is the policy 5756. That was passed November 26th. You all know it as a transgender policy. I was here last week, I talked about it. I've been in the past few months talking about it. The reason why I'm so passionate about it is, I understand that it was so divisive in our community. I mean, our EHT Facebook page went off the chain. It was crazy. And honestly, I felt bad for you guys, I was praying for you guys, because I felt bad at the abuse that you guys were taking. I was not one of them. But I still believe that we rushed through that policy too fast. There were several things in that policy that needed to be hashed out a little bit more. Last week, I talked about the rights of parents, the rights of parents, and how it says that we may or may not tell you. Well, what are the stipulations saying that we will or will not tell you? If it's up to the discretion of one person, honestly, you guys can even switch over, where the next person might have a different idea than the person before. I was talking to people on both sides of that issue, and they all agreed, we wanted hard facts. And so I know I asked the impossible, I know I asked the thing that no one here is going to do, but I want to stand up here and I want to ask it, because I believe it needs to be asked. I want to ask to reopen that policy, bring a committee of people from the community that actually care about this together. Let's hash it out, let's talk about it. Because still, if you bring it up anywhere, people are just gonna be yelling this and that, and I want to let you know that there are people in the community who are not focused on yelling at each other, but actually want to work on this. And I'll put my name first, John Serbin, I'll put my name there. But I want to let you guys know that I do care for you guys, I appreciate you guys, I'm excited for my kids to come to the school district one way, one day. But I really believe that we need to look at this policy again. It's Pandora's Box. We rushed through it, and I understand why, but I really believe we need to look into it again. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public at this time would like to address the board on any items? Seeing none, any board members would like to address the public at this time? Yes, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
Mr. Ellis? Stop talking about me over there. I won't be long. I was just gonna say that, and I mean, it's true, that I wasn't saying, "Mr. Mason, it's good to see you. We did miss you.